Okay, you guys ready?
I'm ready.
All right, we'll get started. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome to the January 18th, 2018 Town of Riverhead Planning Board Work Session. This is our first meeting of the new year. Our first meeting was canceled due to the bad weather, so this is our official first meeting of the new year. First on the agenda, phase discussion item four, Riverhead Commons.
Um, just really not a lot to discuss, but, um, as you know, it's a phased development of a medical professional office center. Um, the only change that I just want to mention, because I always go through the resolutions before the board meeting, and I did notice that one of the conditions of the approval was to amend the site lighting, so it's 3,000 Kelvin on the lighting plan, but I noticed that on the site plan, they also have the lighting specifications, so they need to change it there as well. Unless the board has any questions for me, I think we'd kind of...
Did you want to amend the resolution?
Yes, I'd like to amend the resolution to indicate that the lumine- the luminaire schedule and the parking lot, like specifications on the site plan have to be revised to indicate the lighting fixtures will be 3,000 Kelvin. So that'll be the warm white light instead of the cold blue light. And Mr. Israel, is he okay with that?
Yeah, we were okay with that. That's not a problem. Absolutely.
So unless the board has any questions about any of the conditions I put on there, that's really it. They've, as I said to Stan, this is, um, this was submitted quite a long time ago. It was before we started doing the preliminary and the final site plan approvals. So this is just going to be one site plan approval like we used to do. We're going to acquire future cross-access agreements to the west. The rest of the property adjacent is Southern County Parkland, so there's no cross-access needed there. They are going to connect to sewers, like I had mentioned. So the plans just have to be amended to show the hookup the way it's shown, has been approved by the sewer district. Really nothing, nothing else to really go into unless you have anything to say.
Right, so, and again, I'm waiting for my father to walk in, but one of the things that came up for us was that number 25 here talks about no temporary or permanent COs shall be issued for any building until a slew of items have happened. Again, because this is a phased build-out, that we will have a tenant that will have to occupy this site while we're still working on other areas. And in the phasing plan-
I thought I had changed that.
Oh, did, did we get to change that? I just looked at it very quickly and it still said the same header here.
The no building permit shall issue until we have the Mylars, we get the Mylars-
Correct.
Correct. And then, then it says no permanent, 25, no permanent temporary or permanent CO shall be issued for any building until the Phase One site improvements are completed and the improvements associated with the building constructed.
Okay, okay. Yeah, as long, as long as, you know, it's our intention to build this as fast as we can, but the market might affect that a little bit as we're, as we're trying to go.
Thankfully, if we go to the phase plan...
Sorry.
Um... Basically, middle of the site and the frontage with the landscaping and the grading and the stabilization and landscaping back here is going to be done as Phase One.
Mm-hmm.
And then they'll build either one of these buildings and that section of parking lot and landscaping-
With Phase One, too, obviously, the town wants us to put a little RPGs inside and bring utilities this way, so at least, we'll at least have to pull a foundation-only permit and maybe put a little temporary structure to house those, to keep them heated and, you know, get the site lights up and things like that while we're going through, but when we do figure out which building goes first, we'll be pulling both of those permits consecutively.
And I did change that to make it clear that you wouldn't get a CO or a PEP right for each building until you did the Phase One and that building and the associated improvements.
No problem.
Okay.
Did you have any other things you wanted to talk about?
He agreed on everything already.
Perfect. We're good.
Sign the papers.
We're ready to. No, this one's been around a long time, so we're ready to move on it when we take up the resolutions. It was just the one lighting issue.
The only thing was, I don't know if you were here or not here, I noticed that on the site plan, you also listed lighting. So the condition about changing the Kelvin, you'd have to do that on the site plan as well.
Okay. I don't agree with it, but if you guys want, I'm tired and all, so.
Not a problem.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Ovaluk Homes.
This is Jason Venkus of Ovaluk Homes in your own and tomble for Young &amp; Young.
Okay. All right. Good afternoon, Planning Board. What I'm presenting is a, we have a subdivision application which seeks to subdivide an existing 7.78 parcel into four new buildable lots. The existing parcel is located on Overlook Drive, which is a private road in Aquabog, off of Meeting House Creek Road. Parcel's presently improved with several buildings, many of which are vacant or dilapidated. The Overlook Drive right-of-way passes through the entirety of the parcel, from Meeting House Creek Road all the way to the south and continues on to the end of the point. The area is predominantly residential, with the exception of a vacant duck farm to the west here. The parcel is located within the RB40 zoning use district. Although this current application is only seeking a four-lot subdivision, which by Town Code Section 301-3 is considered a minor subdivision due to the kind of compounded subdivision history of the parcel, this application must be treated as a major subdivision. The history on the parcel back in 2007, the Planning Board at the time approved a three-lot minor subdivision by Resolution 51 dated July 10th, 2007, which subdivided, which created a three-lot subdivision. Two residential lots were conditioned that they could not be further subdivided, and this is the remaining lot that are now, they're now coming in for the, this subdivision. 2007 subdivision approval also included a resolve that the Planning Board overrode the recommendation of the Suffolk County Planning Commission to change the Overlook Drive to a 50-foot right-of-way, and that's why it wasn't approved at that time. So now, major subdivisions pursuant to Town Code Section 301-289 desire certain design elements, 55-foot wide right-of-way, certain utility, drainage, et cetera. There's certain requirements. Now, the Planning Board in its discretion may choose to waive some of the requirements of the major subdivision design. At this time, right now, the application is not proposing any of those elements. The applicant has submitted to us a final plat, which-
Greg, what do you mean, they're not proposing to follow what's required, or they're not showing it?
Well, right now, the application is not showing it. Right now, this is just a, the application in its current state doesn't really show any improvements. It just shows the subdivision of the land, doesn't show any plans for improvement of the roads or anything like that. Now, the condition of the road, if you go to page eight and nine, I put some pictures during a site visit. In its current condition, the road is a paved, it's an asphalt road in fair to poor condition, which varies in width from 14 to 19 feet at various points throughout the road. As the road presently exists, there's no turnaround for any emergency vehicles, meaning that, you know, a fire engine or some sort of emergency vehicle responding to, you know, any kind of emergency. If they're down here, they'd have to back out. I believe it's, I kind of scaled it out, it's about 2,800 feet from Meeting House Creek all the way to the end here. So you can imagine trying to, you know, navigate a, you know, a fire engine in reverse 2,800 feet.
One quick question. So I see how you have this shown where the, going to the end of the road, but where does this end on this line?
It's probably-
Right about there?
Right about there. Continuing on the conditioning of the road, there's no existing drainage structures that were found on Overlook Drive during a site visit. The existing condition of the road is that there's no curves, so, you know, the water is just not being impounded on the road and it's allowed to kind of just drain off naturally. In terms of the construction of the road, the road does need to be improved. There are steep building and fire codes that require certain improvements, where driveways are in excess of 500 feet in length and do not exit to another fire apparatus road or public street. Turnaround shall be provided for fire, for use by fire apparatus. Minimum road width needs to be 20 feet wide exclusive of shoulders, and they also need to provide a minimum of 13 foot, six inches of vertical clearance along the way. Now, should the, should the Planning Board decide that they want to waive the requirements of full design standard to a major subdivision, these fire code standards are something that, you know, the Planning Board has no jurisdiction over. Any variance from these would require a variance from the State Board. One of the other requirements is that the road must be constructed to support a fire apparatus weighing at least 75,000 pounds. So there needs to be some design work into the road to ensure that it can sustain the weight.
You're talking about the road just in front of this property or the whole road?
No, the road, what we're recommending is from Meeting House Creek Road, which is the nearest public street, Meeting House Creek Road to the southernmost part of his parcel. You know, we can't really have them do anything further down the road, but from Meeting House Creek to the southernmost part of the property.
That would mean the turnaround would have to be there, at the bottom of their property?
The turnaround would have to be somewhere. I, I mean, it would make sense to have it closer to the, you know, the southern end of the parcel, kind of break up Meeting House Creek about roughly halfway. You know, in terms of the exact location, that's something that, you know, you have to go into the design profession, would have to come to a conclusion. It also, there's also a section in the International Fire Code that states fire line signs as specified in the section need to be posted on both sides of the road for no parking. We received comments from the Fire Marshal, which echoed a lot of the fire code requirements. I also received a letter from the Chief of the Riverhead Fire Department dated January 10th. He maintains several concerns from the standpoint of emergency services in the area. His concerns were there are very little to zero opportunities to turn around apparatus in order to exit the road. Larger apparatus such as engines or trucks will need to back out of the road in order to exit. He cited an extremely narrow roadway will create difficulty in placing apparatus in the event of an emergency. If and when fire service finds it necessary to lay a five-inch supply line for water, the problem concerning the narrow roadbed will be compounded, disallowing any emergency vehicles to proceed through the scene, including EMS personnel.
Greg, can I see what you're reading from?
I thought I sent this to you.
To the, oh, with-
No, I thought I sent it on Tuesday when I came in.
No.
I'm on page seven. Certain, he also cited during Superstorm Sandy, the Riverhead Fire Department responded to a reported structure fire in the area and the apparatus inadvertently rolled off the edge of the roadway into deeper water. The incident placed lives in jeopardy and caused very high repair cost to the district. He also recommended visible boundary markers of some sort along the road to prevent future issues.
But who are they proposing on this four-lot subdivision, they proposing that he puts in all this stuff?
Yeah.
So he doesn't own the property down the end of the road and is more privately owned?
No, we're not, we're recommending him to improve, now, Overlook Drive, aside from, he, the existing right-of-way is entirely on parcels that he owns, aside from a section up here, which belongs to the vacant duck farm. So, I mean, we're asking that he provide these improvements on the parcels that he owns, not any further sound.
Which I've spoken-
Again, that's a state requirement, not a town requirement.
And, and I told Jeff and Greg that, he said he would look into that because he wanted to talk to his neighbors. He has, he has Young &amp; Young, they're going to draw up a road profile for the area that we're talking about in question here, the, obviously, the part of the road that is the subject of the subdivision and up to where he owns, uh, by this, by this flag there.
He's being forced to do these because it's a major subdivision, yet it's four lots.
If it's a minor subdivision or major, that doesn't matter, Ed. It's the State Building Code that if you're proposing a lot that exceeds those distances, it's like a building code requirement, you have to do it. Otherwise, you would have to go to the state to seek a variance.
It was already divided in 2007.
And because he's had really, and enjoyed that relief since the prior subdivision, he can continue, continue that relief, but now he's proposing something different, he's got to bring up the current town and state requirements. The widening of the road, you know, the required road construction, this is the only method of ingress, egress from, you know, to point south. So the plan should include just a way to show that he can construct the improvements while keeping the road passable, you know, whether it needs like a temporary turnoff to allow people to just-
And he doesn't, he doesn't-
Travel during construction.
Greg, you're missing those two lots.
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, he, so the applicant does own this lot, this lot, and the subdivision, so, you know, they're all-
Who owns the right-of-way?
It's a pretty bizarre situation because the right-of-way is privately owns, he owns, if you look at the map, you can see his property line goes over the, the right-of-way, so the, the properties you see at the top, the, and, and the ones that he, the property subdividing is owned by the entities, the, the Overlook Home entities. Everybody else has an easement to go over it, so-
So he owns fee title to the right-of-way?
He owns, he owns title to the right-of-way, where his property's-
Only the portion that goes through the subway.
Correct. Yes.
And then there's an easement within that 30-foot strip that-
Everybody else has.
Everyone else has?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
No, okay.
I, 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 I'm just trying to understand. It's not a 30-foot strip only down, in the middle of Lot 3, I'm sure.
I, I, right, you're, I, I, you're correct. So what was mapped was the limits of easement? Identified as a right-of-way through this subdivision, and it varies in width. I think this is an important discussion item four. So you've identified this area through the-
Through the heat.
Okay.
This was proposed right of way. There is an existing right-of-way, he empty here as well.
Okay.
And it's traveled over here, so I was thinking-
I got you.
During this process, maybe we relocate this so that the pavement, the roadway would be with-
So the right-of-way runs through here and then runs through this-
And that's described out here by the previous subdivision.
So he owns fee title to this-
Yeah, right. Both sides.
So he owns, basically, he owns fee title to everything-
Yes.
And then there's an easement that comes through here, and then an easement that goes through that dash line portion.
Yes.
Understood.
Where's the utility easement?
Sorry?
Where's the utility easement? Is there any-
Utility easement is the same.
Is it, is it common as the access and utility-
Yeah, the utilities are down the pole.
Right, but if you shift the road-
Shift the pavement?
Yeah. What happens to the utility easement?
I'm not sure, we're going to shift the road.
Oh, I thought that's what you just said.
No, no, this, this-
I guess what Stans point is-
I was only talking about the, the pavement that, now that everybody uses to get down here is over here.
Right.
The actual, described right-of-way is over here.
You would not abandon, you would not be abandoning that.
I was thinking that, I was thinking that we would, but-
But, but Stans point is well taken.
That's a legal, legal issue and I'm not sure.
Well, Stans point is well taken. If there is water or utility service through-
No, no, there isn't, I made sure that-
They were all outside.
And, and we can still continue the work.
Again, I didn't need to break-
And I think it's here.
No, thank you.
15's good one.
All right, um, you know, we did, I did mention, you know, the existing utility poles that are right along the roadway. The widening of the road to 20 feet, you know, it may or may not require relocation of these poles. If that's the case, I mean, that's got to be coordinated with PSEG. You know, it's up to applicant to, to provide a plan that shows if they can do it without moving poles.
Anything over 14 feet, yes, it would move.
Um, you know, there may, the new design of the road may require relocation of some landscaping. Any landscaping that needs to be removed should be shown on the plan and just indicated.
There were comments from the town engineer, just saying how you should indicate limits of disturbance, calculate the amount of disturbance, calculate the amount of impervious coverage. He did recommend placing a high point at the road, a direct, adjacent here, and then
pitch northerly towards Meeting House Creek Road and the southern end. Recommended that there might need some drainage structures that could be identified during development. And with respect to the road construction, he just said the existing pavement and subgrade should be mixed in place, completed with four inches of RCA, two inches of binder, and a one-and-a-half inch top course.
I, I have a couple of questions about that, but I'll wait till you're done.
All right. Due to the existing build-out of the peninsula and, you know, the surrounding area, this application represents the final opportunity to kind of improve safety conditions in the area. Not really much more land available for any kind of subdivisions. The Planning Board approves the application, there would be recreation fees that would be imposed in the amount of $9,000, arrived at $3,000 for each newly created lot. Planning Board may want to consider performance bonds during road construction, if, you know, until it's designed to the satisfaction of the town engineer. There were building envelopes that were provided on the application that showed that they complied with old setbacks in the area. Now, there is a, there are wetlands which have been taken out of the yield calculations and the lots still do meet the minimum requirements. However, you know, the Planning Board may want to consider some sort of conservation easement along these areas to ensure that they don't get, you know, built out or disturbed, such that you can keep the, you know, wetland.
Would that preclude him from applying for a dock or anything?
No.
No?
Are you just talking like a non-fertilization, non-disturbance type?
Yeah, and I mean, now, any, any construction of these houses will need to come before the Conservation Advisory Council. They typically will recommend, you know, non-disturbance buffers, you know, non-fertilization vegetation, that kind of stuff. It is located within a Riverhead Water District extension. There is an eight-inch water main that pretty much runs right down the roadway of Overlook Drive.
Greg, one more question. You mentioned the wetlands. I noticed in your recent wetland survey, it was over 10 years ago. I'd like to see that we, one way or the other, you could gain land or you could move land. I think we need to have that up there.
Prior to subdivision approval, you want that mapped out?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Um, the proposed subdivision will require approval from the New York State DEC, subdivision within title wetland boundaries. This approval must be received prior to any Planning Board approvals. Again, any construction within there will require CAC approval. Now, it does, the plan does note a future common dock easement for lot owners. Before that dock is constructed, it will also require CAC approval and DEC approval. This easement should just include bearings and distances, just so if it's going to be Suffolk County Planning Commission-
Here's a microphone already, you're mapped. Don't try not to put-
Suffolk County Planning Commission founded a matter for local determination, and obviously the subdivision will require approval from the Suffolk County Department of Health Services.
Do you have a DEC application in here?
Oh, yeah. This was on first lot.
What's the status of the property to the west?
Wood Cove.
Right now, it's vacant.
What's the potential for it? We've had numerous inquiries with very grandiose conceptual plans, and they've gone nowhere.
It's, it's on the same use though, RW?
Resort tourism. It's on tourism, resort, so, I mean, yeah, big hotels, resorts, that's kind of-
It's, it's really constrained from a zoning standpoint, what he can do with it.
Put pretty high on the county list at one point in time.
Mm-hmm.
I have a, just a couple of questions because I'm, I just want to make sure when Young &amp; Young goes up the road profile, we're all on the same page. There was mentioned that the exist, that the road has to be able to sustain the weight of 75,000, which is fine, but then I'm-
Kim, can I interrupt? Apologize. The first question the board has is not the design pursuant to the State Building Code. The first question the board has to answer is, as a major subdivision, are you going to waive the town road specifications or requirements for a major subdivision road? That's the first question before we even get to the design of, a location of the state code requirements. With the comments from the fire chief from his past experiences down there, I would have a very hard time waiving.
What, waiving the, no, the-
That's what Jeff is asking us.
The 55-foot right-of-way for, right. So that's the question for the board. To build this subdivision, to major subdivision design, is it 55-foot right-of-way?
We can't build to a 55-foot, it's impossible.
And, and the other thing is, the fire chief's-
I'm, Kim, I'm just asking the question, they have, the board has to wait-
But they're at the other end of the road, as you were at the beginning, I mean, there's plenty of lawn you could turn around, it's not like-
We almost lost a truck right at this, right where this ends here, around this, this corner here.
Yeah, it's bad over there, but he's not there, he's way up here.
No, he, he lost, they lost the truck right over here by John's house.
Right, right past this, where your dock easement is.
This area here is very high, very straight, very flat. I don't think there's any down here that's windy and-
This is the marsh, the marsh is right here, right where it turns, right here, over on this, this area here. It doesn't seem to me that it makes any sense. They have a small right-of-way and then a large road, and then it goes down, back down again. Doesn't make any sense. It doesn't prove anything.
Well, it would be, the road would have to be 20 feet from here through-
Well, we're getting, mixing apples and oranges, is the town road specifications of a 55-foot wide road-
I didn't just say.
And versus what the state requirement is, which is the-
20-foot right-of-way, 13-foot, six-inch clearance.
Yeah, I mean, the 20-foot is something that we can work with, but we just can't do it 55-foot.
I mean, there's major trees, big, you know, silver maple on these people's front lawns, you know, over here, colossos and masons, sinaski.
I would waive the town rights, I think, a 55-foot road. People live down Overlook Road because it's a cool little country road. Improving this to 55 feet won't help the fire services at all. The problem areas are south of this lot.
I'm not certain about that. I'd like to go take a look. I mean, I've been down there many times, but I'd like to take a look exactly where this is ending. I mean, we're looking at it on paper and making comments, but take a look down there and maybe make an appointment with the fire chief and see. All right.
And then, Ed, the other question, once you make that decision and the board decides not to do the, require the 55 feet, they then would have to design it to the, meet the state fire code. That would-
That would, what Kim is saying, would have to be shown on a revised map to us.
Right, and, and I think my client doesn't have any issue with meeting the state required. I, that's something that's workable. Fifty-five feet, where are you gonna find that? Where you, where are you gonna get it from?
Well, maybe. Don't mix up the fifty-five foot right-of-way with the pavement.
I'm not mixing up any of it. I wanna know actually what size of the fire trucks are, the height of the fire trucks and the turning radius of the fire trucks before we prove something on paper.
I understand that. I just.
That you're telling us. So, I'm gonna do a site visit with the chief and we'll, we'll determine that. That's how I'll make my decision.
I understand. The only thing I was saying was that don't, I think everybody's talking about roadway width and the code is fifty-five foot right-of-way.
Right. No, I understand you can go, the state is less, but what should really dictate it is the.
No, no, I'm talking, I'm talking about.
Well, even when he refers, when he refers to a fifty-five foot wide right-of-way, that doesn't mean that the road is fifty-five.
The road is fifty-five. The pavement is something else. That's what I'm trying to get across.
Just wanna be comfortable that the emergency vehicles can get down there, at least to the end of where you're proposing.
Yeah, I understand, but that's the pavement, Stan.
Yes.
That's funny. That's funny.
And it's.
I understand you're gonna have four feet of grass on either side of each shoulder and that counts as the right-of-way. I understand that.
It's a twenty-five, I just spoke with Vinnie.
What, I, what's the shaking of the head? I understand paved and what the actual right-of-way is. I understand that.
It's a twenty-eight foot paved with a fifty-five foot right-of-way.
I wasn't talking to you, Stan. I was talking to everybody.
Okay.
Trying to get it on the same page.
I forgot what I was gonna ask. Okay, so, uh, but yeah, as far as the turnarounds, um, we, we have no issue either with providing the required turnaround for emergency vehicles on, down over here. I think, uh, I had already spoken with Young and Young and that, that they were able to accommodate that over here. So, as far as turnaround for emergency vehicles, yes, we, we understand that's something that, that has to be done and required and he doesn't have any, client doesn't have any issue with that.
Also, there's also the issue then of drainage and curbs. We have, should we address each one of those as well?
Well, I mean, the, the drainage will need to be addressed and there were comments from the town engineer. In terms of the curbing, I believe that's one of the design aspects of the major subdivision. So, I mean, you know, the, I don't know if the board can like pick and choose if it wants curbs, if it doesn't, you know, I, I don't know if.
There might be a higher. We have plenty of subdivisions that we don't put curbs in like the Condos.
Can I just check here for a second? This is a private road right-of-way.
Right.
Or private road. So, in essence, as far as the standards that we have in our code, those standards have been developed in essence based upon, you know, regulations, codes, et cetera, and, and the standard in which we, the town, take ownership. Using those standards as a guide, what my suggestion to the board would be is that they be notified in a manner that would be suitable to you. Meet the international fire code and address your concerns with respect to stormwater runoff and et cetera. In, in evaluating this right-of-way, what the required improvements are, there may be a need for curbing, there may not be. And I would put that bonus on the applicant's design threat professional to demonstrate, hey, listen, we don't need curb because this is how we're going to manage and control stormwater.
Or maybe we do.
Or maybe you do. And that would need to be brought to us, reviewed on our side of the table and deemed acceptable and acceptable to this board. To take that a step further and just looking at this, if we're closing this down, access easement. And, and looking at what the international fire code talks about with suitable or various turnarounds, they do have various types of turnarounds beyond cul-de-sacs. They have hammerhead layouts. They have various layouts in which they could incorporate a portion of that easement area for a turnout and a hammerhead type design. I believe Young and Young is very familiar with those standards. And again, I think it's a matter of, of focusing on, you know, them coming to us with a standard design that would meet the international fire code, us comparing that and taking to the extent of comparison what our standards are. And then saying, alright, if you're proposing curb, do not propose curb. Is that acceptable? Is it not acceptable? And, and kind of hash through that. I, I would, you know, just on the surface, looking at this as a final flat, I think we're a little bit ahead of ourselves. And that there are some issues here that need to be hashed out and to your satisfaction, or we kind of consider this to be in the final statement.
What you're saying is we need a sketch plan.
I would think so.
This is. Did you mention, this is an application as a major, they went straight to final. They, they, and under town law, I don't pretend to be a lawyer.
That was my fault.
They bypassed the sketch plan and the preliminary and went straight to final.
I believe the title's different.
And, and again, as far as the rights and questions of being a width of fifty-five feet, that's a standard that, that we have in our code with respect to right-of-ways that are to be dedicated to the town riverhead. This is not going to be dedicated to us. So, as long as we can get the construction of the roadway to a standard that's acceptable for you, as long as it fits in that right-of-way width, I think that's something that would be, you know, should be somewhat be considered to be acceptable by the board.
If you take, remember like, uh, this is a bating hollow. They don't have a fifty-five foot right-of-way and twenty-foot. But it has been reviewed by the fire marshal and we're adequate provision that they can, usually have loop, loop road system so that fire trucks don't have to back up. The road standards are based so that they can sustain the weight of a fire apparatus. There are other considerations. I'm not a fireman. They're talking about laying out five-inch holes. I'm not sure how to design that. I'm not, Stan, you know more about this than I do.
No, it wouldn't come. It's up to the fire chief and the fire marshal.
So, whatever design they have, we're gonna send it back to them to make sure that whatever is going to be approved meets the minimum state requirements.
Absolutely.
And, and, and that is comfortable with the fire department.
Like I said, he's aware of the minimum state requirements. We've talked about it and he has no issue with meeting the minimum.
This is a relatively new requirement in the state building code. One of the things, I, I have to go to the code classes and this is one of the things I've learned from it. So, unfortunately, it's a new relevant revelation, so to speak, on a lot of applicants on the east end that all of a sudden now you have to go build roads to these minimum standards. And it's no longer outside of the municipal jurisdiction. It's a state requirement.
It's not new construction and it's a private road.
Doesn't matter.
Gonna ruin Overlook Road.
Are there any other issues that the board would like to discuss so we can, so we understand the wetlands about?
Another thing too is, in light of ownership of block one and block two. As far as needing to improve that section of roadway and, and, and the applicant's ability to, that, that should be also be discussed.
Yeah, no, this state requirement requires that then to be, they have to provide it all the way from the public.
It was pretty wide at the beginning already, wasn't it?
But I mean, again, we, we haven't touched on, you know, something about the right-of-way, etc.
Right.
We know who the applicant is, you know, just off the map. Think it seems to be a common name on those two lots, so that should be further discussed with the applicant.
Well, we, I had said earlier that when Young and Young, when they draft their road profile, that would be included in the road profile.
There's a lot of buildings here. Are they all gonna be abandoned on the different lots? Anybody living in them?
Just the one, there's one living in the middle one.
The one that looks like a boathouse?
Uh, no.
Lot two?
Uh, yes.
Uncle Artie's house.
Yeah, he's still living there.
And you're gonna, and you really have to get started with the health department on this one.
The health department approved this in the previous subdivision.
IA. IA.
Approved this too?
No, the health department.
That was lot three on the previous subdivision and they.
Oh, lot three.
And they made, they made the previous subdivision of the public water around those two houses.
Sliding down here first. They are, you know, they're.
Of this year? What, the advanced septic? They. Yeah.
Okay, so then, we've checked the flag, right, checked the flag on the wetlands, a road profile. You're gonna go talk to the chief.
Yeah, I would just, is there any, any landmark or anything that I'd know where we're coming to the end of this?
There's a little boathouse at the end of the road.
There's a old house there. It's almost in the road.
That's the boat, is that the boathouse that?
The best thing that I did was just kinda like count the telephone pole. There's a telephone pole right here. I mean, it's not the best, but that's kind of how I gauged where I was on the road.
Where is that house you're referencing?
The boat, I, I call it the boathouse. I don't know if that's what the. It's on the.
Right here. And then there's a driveway that goes off into here. But, but you'll see this approximately wetlands right.
Okay.
And there's a pole, there's a pole with a guy wire there on this one.
Okay, so we'll get all those things.
You're saying the issues were down here first? This is where they said about where you end.
Yeah, the issues happen.
Down here?
Yes, right in, right in here where, uh, the guy's John's house, it's really marshy on this side, right in this turn. I don't see a bunch of guard down there.
We'll take a look.
Okay, so.
Well, no, I just, the, the location, I think Vinnie recommend, you know, the, the location of the turnaround, I think should be discussed before we go to a location.
Okay.
I mean, you know.
Come here, Jason. I want you to stop that.
Vinnie had, Vinnie had recommended.
Well, it's easy, right by the access dock.
My, my position would be is get the fire marshal and the fire department involved to see if they have any suggestions as well as, as where they would, you know, with the understanding that they gotta go further down the road to serve other people, that, you know, it, it, would this be an acceptable location?
Okay.
It's like it, to have the turnaround here, meaning the truck would have to navigate this turn.
Yeah, I don't care where it is.
As opposed to here where, you know, they kind of look at it. That may seem like a more appropriate place in order to not have to negotiate that turn.
Yeah, I don't think he cares one way or the other, where it is.
Where it is.
There, there's an alignment standard in the international fire code. So, my position would be if that alignment standard could be fit in that location, that would be something that you could consider. If it doesn't fit, then you gotta find another spot.
Doesn't sound like it's an issue though, right?
No, he doesn't care where it is.
Could I just ask a couple of questions? Cause I'm. Number one, we can't put much more than a fourteen-foot pavement in this roadway without moving the poles. And you suggest that we move it?
I didn't say that. I wanted to take a look to see. My concern was that it's adequate access for emergency vehicles. That's all my statement was.
I said it just, I said it may, I said it may require.
No, you just said, I said that you're gonna move the poles. I didn't say that.
What was, what was your other question? You said you had a couple?
I said if we make pavement wider than fourteen feet, we have to move poles to stay within the regular. That's all I'm just.
Okay.
And if we don't get relief from the width required by the fire code and by the town, then I think we've got major issues.
I think the board's asking you to show us what you propose and then we'll, we'll get it from there.
I mean, again, you know, the, the utility poles are situated on the western side of the road. I mean, what's in it? They can't expand the road out to the east. I mean, they might require owners endorsement and approvals if you were to encroach on the property. But to not relocate the poles, you know, the road could be widened to the east.
No, it can't. It's not on our property.
Beyond the other people's properties, yeah. There'd be major trees, there'd be major trees to come down.
Well, let's see exactly what we're up against. Maybe it's only a couple of feet. That's possible.
Well, I'm telling you, I just looked at it before I came in. Most we can get is fourteen feet without.
Alright, show us on a, show us on a piece of paper.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I suggest something else?
On the road profile.
You might, you know, we, we counted it. I forgot what it was, but we counted a number of homes down here on Overlook Private. It's up in the twenties, twenty-eight or something like that. Some of those are probably counted here. So, there's twenty homes probably more or less south of this, which still have a fire issue. I was wondering if there's a way that you and the fire inspector and the fire department could take some of the money we're making him spend and put it into a turnaround down at the end, if somebody was willing to, to do that, leave an arrow with and, and get a turnaround down at the end.
I mean, I can say living, living on the property, you know, I have no problem doing that, but anytime you get a truck to go down there, they can't turn around.
All the way to the end.
There's no way, no way to turn around. Even UPS, you know, I stopped track the trailers coming, delivery trucks, because here, it's gonna help these homes. But this turnaround's not gonna help service these homes down here one bit.
If you look at the way it's.
Well, they use, don't they use the driveways, turnaround?
No, it's so tight down there. They, even, there should be a turnaround.
The PS, they drive into the driveway.
Yeah, but it's tight.
And they back out.
That's the only way to do it.
That's what they do now, yeah. Thank God there hasn't been any catastrophes down there. Okay, but maybe we should, uh, maybe we should take a look at that and try to, you know, work something out and take into consideration this area then. Why, why make it right here in that town?
Well, I, you know, I don't know.
It takes somebody, takes somebody.
Yeah, a public hearing. We'll have to see how, what kinda people come out and what their concerns are.
Is there any more potential for subdivision further? Oh, it's fully subdivided south there?
Is there? Here is?
No, there's no, no more subdivision.
No, there's no.
No, there's no subdivision, no.
I think Greg said that.
Yeah, this is pretty much the last bite of the apple, so.
So, when the plant, can the, can the, I think you bring back, I know we keep talking about deviations, variations. In order to prove the subdivision, you need to show how it's gonna comply with that state code.
That's not an issue.
Okay.
I, I understand that. The town code is something different, but state code, I get.
Well, there's relief from the state code too, right?
You have to call, you have to go to the Department of State on that.
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
I, I think he said he had, yeah. Hey, Kim, for the record, you did not have, you submitted an application DEC.
No, we haven't.
Not yet. Nor to the health board.
Okay.
Just, just.
This.
I, I don't think they're gonna require it on subdivision because they look at the individual lots.
Really?
You know, once the lots are created and the people can be built, that's where they're gonna get it.
Meaning the alternative, these alternative systems?
No, no, no. They're in the map, so.
You could keep the kittens, but then you have dialysis. So, the, the bad kittens pouring on the good kittens. So, it's often surprising when you get cardiac failure, which I don't know if you were just gonna get. I didn't think it's part of the, oh, it's just.
I got a call. We still got it, so.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome. Okay, next item, uh, on the agenda is wetlands inventory update. Did all you get the copy of the Justin Man report?
Yes.
George, come on up. It's in your, it should be in your packet. Yeah? Yeah?
Now I have it.
I was too smart to have.
You just got some minutes today.
I was too smart to go and.
That packet that was sent to me.
She brought your packet over for you today.
But he, he walked in in the morning. He came in in the middle of the.
Don't worry about it.
Oh, okay.
Putting a water trail around the wetlands?
The whole town.
It's a good idea.
Not on.
Yeah, they came up with a suggestion. We could make a trail all the way around the wetland.
That's great.
Well, the reason that I'm here, uh, thank you for the opportunity to make a presentation here about some upgrading to the freshwater wetland map. A little history about this. Um, the inventory was done in Jauverre, was the conservation, the chairman of the Conservation Advisory Council when this whole thing was, uh, being undertaken. So, he's.
Did he bring back memories?
You got any questions? See, Jeff, Jeff told me, just, just for, make it feel really good, is that when this inventory was being done, he was a freshman in college, Joe, so.
I know when it was done.
Uh, Greg, was that, raise your hand if you're not, if you were not born.
I would have a twinkle.
The prior.
Chris, were you, I don't think you were born nineteen seventy-eight, were you?
I was. I was a year old.
Oh, there you go.
The prior planning department head was an intern.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, that was. Uh, anyway, um, when this was undertaken, uh, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, I think about four hundred wetland potential sites were identified. This was conducted through, um, a lab at Cornell Corp, uh, Cornell University. I think it was funded, and correct me again, Joe, if I'm wrong, by an eight-thousand-dollar grant, which now would be.
Eighty thousand.
Easy.
More than that.
Probably four hundred thousand.
Yeah.
You know, it was, it was very expensive undertaking. And the town wanted to know where these wetlands were, what the quality of the wetlands were, uh, for the kind of purposes of what you were actually. what the quality of the wetlands were, uh, for the kind of purposes of what you were actually discussing here at the last, the presentation. The thing that, I guess it was maybe priorities or, um, being cost effective, what the, what the town did, um, is do a site inspection of wetlands that were one acre or larger in size, those were the ones that they went in and actually, uh, inventory wetland species, which is, you know, is what really defines a wetland, just because it's a depression, which some of these probably are just depressions on the map. And what I, I'm proposing is that the town go back and at least do the, uh, ground truthing of wetlands that are half acre to an acre in size, um, as you're probably aware, I'm sure that everybody remembers, there was a situation on Route fifty-eight, where a developer decided that he wanted to develop some, a piece of property, and, uh, effectively just cleared a, uh, depression, referred to as a depression on the site, and it was, uh, difficult for the town to prove it actually had been a freshwater wetland, and that was about a half acre in size, um, I don't know if you have situations like that, that, that have developed, um, you know, the last ten years till twelve years.
Wasn't he a farmer though?
He was, I, I, you're right, he was, and let's not go any further than that.
Was it mapped?
Let's leave that alone.
Was that mapped?
Yes, it was, it was mapped, it was, uh, it was a depression that was on here, uh, and the mistake that, that this person made was that, um, he got a, um, person who had the qualifications of identifying freshwater wetland species, informally walked the site. So, the town spoke to this gentleman, and it was, it was a verified, but it cost the town a lot of money, there was a lot of money that was spent in litigation over this, um, the upside of that situation was that he was fined, um, seventy-five thousand dollars, and, um, I'm suggesting that, uh, if the town were to decide to upgrade the inventory of the, the smaller wetlands, that you could use, um, that, that money, which is sitting in account, it's been there for over ten years, you know, gaining interest.
But it earmarks for environmental.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point, it, it's, uh, the, the way it's written is that this has to be used for, um, environmental remediation. So, what you would have to do is you would have to go back and change what that could be used for, like environmental, just the envi- general environmental purposes, um, you, you know, you're, I mean, you're well aware that seventy-five thousand dollars would certainly not go very far with any kind of remediation, uh, project, uh, when, um, Joe Hall was here, he did want to use that money, he, he was considering using that money for, uh, I think it was some frag mightis removal at, at Epcal, which, I mean, that would have just be gone.
Wouldn't have went very far.
It would not have, but as far as a, a wetland inventory, um, that would tell you a lot, that, that would, that would be very useful, I think, to the planning board, um, to, uh, go back and identify some of these depressions as actual wetlands, there are about a hundred of them. When I considered this, uh, several years ago, I, I, I guess what I did, I don't even remember doing this, but I guess I went through all the files and identified, I think, between a hundred and a hundred and ten wetlands that are ranging in size between, or depressions, I should say, that range between, um, a half acre to an acre in size.
They weren't shown on this map, George?
Yeah, they, they would be.
Even if they, they're, they're all on you.
There, there are some wetlands that are not on the map that I've come across.
That's correct.
And some of them may be identified by, uh, U S Fish and Wildlife Services.
Yeah, there are some.
Yeah, the Islamic Center, remember, that was one. South Shore Road, I've got a building application.
North, uh, uh, North Ford Preserve.
Uh, Urban Garston, Urban Garston Retail Center, the non-wetland.
So, well, that was, that was, um, it's questionable whether that was actually a wetland at the time when these maps were prepared forty years ago.
Yeah, they've been arguing that.
Right.
They have, it had developed into a wetland, it was just a drainage area, I think, originally, but that's.
It has developed.
It's grew.
Yeah, it happens.
George.
Yeah.
Are there continually new wetlands and other wetlands drying up, is it something that's ever changing, or are they pretty much?
Sure, that's, it's, it's an evolving thing, uh, but the.
I think it, it goes very slowly for the most part.
But the, the plant species will survive, um, in, in a wetland, even if it, even if it dries up, they, they, they will survive, they're pretty, pretty tough.
It's both, it's both the wetland species and the soil hydrology.
Like, uh, this is, if you read the staff report, I, I'm impressed with what Jeff Seaman put together here, he, uh, seems to support the idea of, um, going back and, uh, improving, uh, what the town, um, already has, so.
So, is, wouldn't that fall under the town board jurisdiction?
Sure, well, you're gonna have to go to the town board.
Make a recommendation.
To actually, uh, spend the money, yes, if, if, if you can make the recommendation of the town board, that that's the way the seventy-five thousand dollars could be applied, and I think the, it, I mean, if the money is there, and, and you've got a possibility of, uh, improving the, the town's wep-, uh, the town's inventory, it, it just seemed, would seem to make sense.
I apologize for Jeff, Jeffrey Seaman not being here, he, he was away this week, um, but he did manage to, uh, get this report out today, and one thing I'd like to do is, um, put together a work plan, so to speak, with George and Jeffrey when he gets back, bring it back to you for consideration, um, if you agree with it, we can send that to the board.
So, I thought I read in his report that it also included, um, title wetlands, but this town, uh, code says freshwater wetlands, so would.
But, that is a good question.
The title wetlands, I think, are pretty well, um, under the jurisdiction of the D E C, so I don't think that that would be something you would necessarily have.
The only things that led the town to do this was when the freshwater wetlands law came out and basically said, everybody's gotta do it or we'll, or we'll do it in the state, and that would also mean that if the state did it, it would be under their jurisdiction. And everything that took place in the town would have to go to the state, just like it has to do with title wetlands or freshwater wetlands. So, that was the motivation that the town used to say, oh, we have to do this.
And I don't know how many, uh, state wetlands there are, um, that they've actually gone in and, and kind of adopted, um, but the, the town wetland, um, inventory, um, is much more, is much more extensive than what the D E C, even, the D E C recognizes, I think it's wetlands that are four acres or larger in size, if you remember, or have a special quality.
Significant, significance.
Some, 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 some special significance, uh, and obviously, there's a lot more.
So, there are some state designated wetlands within the town of Riverhead?
Sure.
So, I wonder if we could get a copy of their G I S mapping?
Yep.
And overlay it.
Well, we, we have that already.
You do?
You have it, so maybe the task isn't, uh, do you know, is it, is it significant?
There are oftentimes, um, wetlands that are not D E C, they're just town wetlands.
Right, but I mean, if, if theirs are already established.
All of their wetlands would be an acre or larger in size, all, all, I can guarantee you.
They're larger than that, do they have?
But I mean, they're at least.
Hep takers?
They're at least, they're at least an acre, and, and some of them, some of them are, have some unusual significance, where they're sold and four acres in size, and they've adopted those wetlands also, I think one of them's right behind the highway department, as a matter of fact, that they've, um, very significant wetland in there that they've, but that's, the wetlands that I'm suggesting to you, half acre to an acre in size, I don't think any of those would be under the jurisdiction of the D E C.
No, I was just pointing it out for maybe ease of updating, if we could use their G I S information and just overlay it onto whatever the town tasks someone to do.
Well, I think we can take what we have and they have and put with one map.
You know, on, on our G I S, we can over, you know, we can click the D E C wetlands, it'll map it, sometimes they kind of overlay, sometimes they don't.
Yeah.
I mean, I've run into issues, I was dealing with an application for the C A C where there was a decent sized wetland up on South Shore Road, which wasn't a mapped D E C wetland, uh, I spoke to a representative from the D E C, and he's like, you know, we, they'd actually been out there, and he said it's a nice looking wetland, but they wouldn't come out, they wouldn't map it, they wouldn't incorporate it into their map, so.
Didn't have the significance that they, the threshold that they were.
Yeah. Doesn't mean that it's not important, though.
Yeah.
What kind of expense this would be for the town to do this?
Well, if you were, I, I did have an estimate from a person who was, um, interested in getting involved in this, um, probably three years ago, four years ago, and he was willing to do it for, I think it was two hundred and fifty dollars a wetland, a hundred wetlands, do the math.
Less, maybe seventy-five thousand that's sitting there?
Wouldn't use the seventy-five thousand.
Oh, you wouldn't, I thought you suggested that.
You've got seventy-five thousand dollars to play with, to use.
Right, right.
But it wouldn't, I don't think.
It won't cover it, no, 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 no.
I don't, and you, you stop and think about it, I mean, the entire inventory, this, this is, if you had to do something like this now, I don't know, I can't imagine what it would cost to do this, the, I mean, uh, obviously, the technology is a lot better than it was forty years ago, and this, this required flyovers and everything, aerial photography.
Well.
Extremely expensive at that time, and you, you don't have to, you wouldn't have to use that now.
Yeah, somebody would fly a drone, right?
Yeah, Jeff's actually used drones in some C A C applications that were done.
We're not doing.
At that, at that time, the mapping was.
A company that you hired me to it.
What they call three D mapping, and you could take the aerial photographs, and they had special glasses, you look down, you could see the depth, and that's how, and that's how Cornell did on every, on every map, and they, that, they circled them so they knew where to go.
Right.
Based on what was there in the seventies.
I was thinking, this might, you know, and somebody else's might not be using this, but, you know, for the wetlands, but somebody else may already have this information.
Right, that's what, we're gonna, we're gonna do that research.
Yeah, I think, I think you should, I think that's.
They, they wouldn't, uh, nobody would have the ground truthing that, that I'm suggesting to you, this is where somebody actually has to go out and do some bushwhacking and, and actually identify the plants, that's what you need to do, you can't do that by any kind of an aerial, you can't just fly over it, you gotta have somebody that's gonna walk in there and identify the plants.
Put the tick suit on and go.
Yeah, gotta.
Go in.
Use, use some D. That's it, gentlemen, I, I.
So, I'll put together a plan of action, I'll, George, I'll give you a call, and maybe give you a phone call, put together an action plan, I hunt on the seventy-five thousand, hopefully it's still there.
It is there.
And, um.
You checked, you said you checked it through this.
Okay, then, um.
She checked, it's still there.
I'll have it through the machine, I'll have the report for you, uh, what type of, like. I'll probably send you.
Well, I got that.
I'll take these and.
Where's some of those arms?
Huh, they're copies, they can.
Okay, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, George, as usual, take care.
I don't know if you guys want a copy, if the board members want copies of the map, we actually have a copy, color copy machine now, that makes them look.
I'll reference where they are, because it's.
I, I did see the, it was rolling around, uh, Sam.
Oh, yeah?
With the two.
They have a fade in.
I stick out, it was there in nineteen seventy-nine.
They're in dark.
I would imagine it would be changed pretty substantially.
That's why you got these, make, make sure that.
Right, Dan, some of them are just, like, you know, not checked, because it's like they're.
Yeah, well, we ran into it next to a high school, right?
Each time it comes up, we have to grab.
Individually due to.
Different public hearing.
Oh, there is a public hearing, it's cast, it was cast, we're just letting people know that was adjourned.
Oh. Yeah, all right, the next item, uh, is listed as a public hearing, but that is scheduled for February first, for Long Island Sports Park, and the applicant was, um, notified of the reposting.
Yep, they were posting the property, and it would be noticed in the paper.
Okay, on the resolutions, um, any comments from the public before we do the resolution, no one from the public?
Can I, can I just make a comment? Oh, there's nobody from the public, there's one of these resolutions, let me get it, uh, that I'd like to see, I've asked to have, to see the site plan, I haven't seen it yet, on Perkins. Okay, and do we have the site plan here?
For Perkins.
It's resolution oh five, Jonathan and Lauren Perkins.
This is a two nineteen, I don't have the two nineteen application.
You don't have the?
Oh, you bring it over.
Oh, yeah, I just, I just invited.
All right, Jonathan, then I'm gonna vote no on it.
Or obscene.
Okay, go ahead, sorry. I'll move, uh, resolution.
Well, did you have anything before we do the resolutions, you want to guess?
No.
No, I discussed my resolution.
Okay, good, all right.
Okay, I'll move resolution number one, for the two thousand eighteen, for the preliminary site plan approval of auto zone expansion.
Uh, discussion, I just wanna make sure that the, uh.
Irrigation.
Irrigation was included there.
Irrigation.
Second motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution number one for the auto zone expansion preliminary approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, resolution is approved, number two.
I'll move, uh, number two, Atlantis Calverton Building Alterations, uh, granted the administrative approval of the site plan.
Second motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution number two for Atlantis Calverton Building Alterations, administrative approval, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, resolution is approved, number three.
Move resolution number three of the Red Commons with the.
Uh, just wanted to remind you, it's as amended.
Yep, thank you.
Red Commons, uh, as amended for the lighting, uh, so moved.
I'll talk. Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution number three for Riverhead Commons, uh, as amended for the lighting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, resolution is approved.
I'll, I'll move resolution number four for chapter two nineteen, Cross the Roche Permit.
Second motion.
Motion made and seconded to approve resolution four, chapter two nineteen, for B K R Shores, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, resolution is adopted, number five.
I'll move resolution five of the Red Planning Board for chapter two nineteen for Jonathan, Lorraine Perkins, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve resolution number five for chapter two nineteen, Jonathan and Lorraine Perkins, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
I'm opposed, and I'll say why, and that is because I've asked for this site plan several times, didn't get it, so it's sort of directed at staff, not necessarily at the applicant.
Okay, resolution is approved, um, three to one.
I'll move resolution six for the minor subdivision of Nardoo, Carolyn, Cassidy, Jennifer, Giadano, and Virginia Doyle, uh, to approve an extension for time.
Second motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve resolution six, minor subdivision of Cassidy, Giadano, and Doyle, extension of time, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, resolution is approved, um, okay, we have any public comment on any matters in front of the planning board?
Uh, just a staff comment, I gave, uh, at your request, Dan, I gave everybody a copy of the, uh, active subdivision site plan applications, um, I hate the way we're doing this, I put in a request to get us into the B A S software system so we can track these things electronically.
You have it there for us?
No, I, I sent it to you electronically.
When, today?
Oh, a week ago.
A week ago, okay, did you not get it?
I don't, I don't remember seeing it.
Okay, I asked for it.
Thank you.
No, they're the one who asked for it.
Thank you.
Um, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it together, put it in again for the budget for next year, I put it in the budget for last year, was not funded, so maybe if we can get a resolution from the planning board this year.
Definitely.
For two thousand nineteen, it costs eighteen thousand dollars. That's why.
We take it out of the seventy-five thousand.
For doing the wetlands, we'll do it, we'll do it as an earmark.
Make a motion that we move the minutes of the December twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, planning board meeting, so moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chairman, before we go into executive session, there's two things I want to bring up, uh, basically with staff, um, a while ago, the, uh, former administration, we asked them to put in the Reeves and Horton Avenue, possibly make it a four-way, four-way stop.
Where's, I'm sorry, which one?
To code enforcement.
Reeves and Horton.
Reeves and Horton.
Oh.
There's a church cemetery fence on one side and farm fences on two other corners, uh, I would recommend a code revision, take a look at it, I think the planning board agreed upon that not too long ago.
Okay.
And the other thing is, the code revision, if they could look at the, uh, amending the lighting code for the new L E D lights.
Can we do that?
No, we, not officially.
Not officially, we, I have a code actually drafted, it's just a question of getting into the queue with everything else.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to bring it up.
We're, I can tell you, you can talk to, Karen and Greg will confirm it, we're telling everybody three thousand degree Kelvin now.
Right, I get it, that's great, thank you, that was it.
Okay, um, our next meeting date is February first, twenty eighteen, at seven P M, um, and at this time, we're gonna close the regular meeting and go into executive session for litigation, um, with regard to Reeve and his Z B A decision.
I'll move, we go into executive session.
Second motion.
The motion made and seconded to go into executive session, all in favor?
Aye.
Just for clarity, there'll be no more public portion today?
No, we closed the public meeting, it's just all of our business, it can conclude in just the executive session. Yes.